Hello everyone and welcome to another episode of Selling Greenville, your favorite real estate podcast here in Greenville, South Carolina. I'm your host as always Stan McKeon. I'm a Realtor here in Greenville, South Carolina, and you can find all of my contact information in the show notes. If you need to reach out to me for any of your real estate needs, particularly if you need a Realtor to help you buy or sell real estate in the Greenville area, please reach out to me with that contact information in the show notes. And just a reminder, please like, rate, review, subscribe, all of those good things. If you enjoy this podcast, make sure you don't miss future episodes. Some people might not enjoy this as much as others. If you don't enjoy it, then just don't do those things. You don't need to subscribe to it. You don't need to give your feedback. You can just move right along and keep plugging at whatever you're doing. Now, if it sounds like I'm sick, it's because I am, very, very simply. And so here we go. I'm about to crank out two podcasts with a stuffy and runny nose and a compressed feeling chest and all of that good stuff. I've had this now for several days. It's probably related to a trip that I did, a quick trip that I did a week ago to Vegas. What happens in Vegas stays in Vegas, so I will not discuss any of that, but I'm sure I got sick while I was there. Nonetheless, the content of Selling Greenville never stops. I will provide for you weekly content. I've been doing this now for three and a half years. I think in that three and a half year span, over three and a half years, there's been only two weeks, if I can remember correctly, that I haven't recorded new material and I don't plan to stop anytime soon. And typically I try to keep this podcast light and optimistic, but factual, right? This is all about, I want you guys to actually hear the facts, actually know what is happening in real estate in the Greenville area. That's really the only thing that I care about. At the end of the day, I don't have a major agenda when it comes to the show. I don't have a reason for trying to mislead you guys. I don't even know half the people that are, that are my listeners. A few of you will text me or will let you know, will let me know what you think about my episodes, but for the most part, you know, I can look at statistics, but I can't see who's actually listening. So I don't really have an agenda here outside of just providing good content to people and for you people, hopefully at some point to use me as your Realtor if you don't already. But we have a matter, and occasionally this happens, where a matter happens in our area in South Carolina, specifically the upstate of South Carolina, that becomes a soapbox for me because it involves local real estate and issues that, in my opinion, are not getting proper coverage elsewhere. And when that happens, I tend to go on a rant. And that is precisely what I intend to do. So I'm going to slide my microphone over here right now. Apologies if my volume just changed dramatically, but I'm going to keep the mic here from, for the rest of the time being. And before I really just jump in to the meat and potatoes of the show, I really probably just need to say that all opinions on the show, all of the, the episodes on the show, but this episode in particular, all opinions are my own, not reflective of any groups or any associations that I'm a part of or anything of that nature. All opinions are mine and mine alone. But there is an issue brewing in Greenville County that has not gotten, in my opinion, the right type of coverage. And a lot of people are completely unaware of what is happening in our back door, okay? This past week in Greenville County Council Chambers, an ordinance passed second reading in the county council that if and when it passes third reading, and it will pass third reading, unless people stand up and, and attend that third reading and make their voice known that they aren't happy. This ordinance strips away the rights of property owners in unzoned areas in Greenville County. Only three out of 12 county council members voted against the ordinance. If I remember correctly, those three were Stan Suvalakis, no relation despite us having the same first name, although it's not technically my first name. It's my, my middle name. I go by my, my, my middle name. I'm one of those. Stan Suvalakis, Chris Harrison, and I believe, if my memory serves me, Mike Barnes. Yes, I was in attendance for the meeting. I saw all the drama, everything go down. And so here is what this ordinance is dealing with. It's dealing with two very different things, but both dealing with, with development. Two very different things that they crammed into one and conveniently said, well, you can't really separate these two things, even though Stan Suvalakis asked for them to separate these two things out. The county council had already decided that the nine members, these two things, we're going to pass these and it doesn't matter any, what anyone else thinks, okay? The first one, which we're going to deal with, is the more benign of the two issues. And, and there's some, there are some reasons why I can understand that, that the county council is trying to address this, but it's the issue of riparian buffers. They passed a 50-foot riparian buffer in Greenville County. Here's what that means. Here's what a riparian buffer means. Riparian has to do with waterways. A 50-foot riparian buffer means that developers have to leave a buffer of vegetation at least 50 feet from county streams and jurisdictional waters whenever those developers build in Greenville County. That is, and, and then there, there is an additional element of it. I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but a hundred-foot riparian buffer, if I remember correctly, from major waterways, which that's going to be a fun one to define. And, and that's not the exact terminology. I've got a bunch of notes here. I'll, I'll come back to it at some point, but that's going to be a fun one as well, how, how to define the, the major riparian areas. Now, I want to make one thing very clear here. I am not against environmentalists and I'm not against the green movement. There is a lot of, I would say positives that have come from studies that environmentalists have done from, from things in their agenda. But there is clearly substantial lobbying efforts being made by environmentalists in and outside of Greenville to impact things in Greenville County. Specifically, when it came to this riparian buffer, there were all sorts of environmental groups at Greenville County Council Chambers to express their support verbally for the riparian buffer. Tons of environmental groups were present. They even said, everyone here wearing blue is in support of this. I was wearing blue. I was not aware. I mean, just about everyone was wearing blue, right? People wear blue like all the time. And they said, everyone that's wearing blue is in support of this. That, that was a straight up lie. Nonetheless, these are generally speaking, people who would stop any and all development in Greenville County if they could, because they believe generally speaking, that human dwellings destroy the environment. Now, I'm not going to argue with them one way or the other on any of that. That, that is neither here nor there when it comes to, to this podcast. But that is generally speaking, what they believe. If you really boil it down, they wouldn't say they believe that, but if you really have a conversation with them, that's generally speaking what they believe. Now, before I say anything else, I would like to bring to everyone's attention that there is substantial money being pumped into Greenville's local elections from outside of Greenville. I know this, I have firsthand knowledge of this happening. There are special interest groups trying to turn Greenville into their next little project, even sending substantial money into last week's mayor and city council elections. Now ask yourself, what is it that they want Greenville to be that it isn't already? What are they trying to turn the upstate of South Carolina into? I'm not going to answer that question. I just want you to think about that. Why is there substantial money being pumped into Greenville by interest groups, special interest groups from outside of Greenville into our elections? Now, I should probably say, before I jump back into the topic at hand, some might argue that developers and Realtors such as myself are also a part of special interest groups. And that is true to a certain extent. But nobody complained about Realtors or developers being a, an impactful special interest group when Greenville went from a municipality with half of downtown boarded up and tons of crime throughout the county into indisputably one of the best places to live and visit, not just in the southeast, but the entire US. So it's interesting, as all these outside interests creep into our area, that frequently I'm hearing the scapegoat for problems in our county tend to be the people like the developers and Realtors that have been here the whole time the county has been improving. Hmm, I wonder why that's the case. And I'll say, with regard to Realtors just wanting more and more development, because that's what I keep hearing. Realtors just want them to develop Greenville and turn Greenville into the next Atlanta or Charlotte. That's what a lot of people believe. And I would just ask you, how does that actually help Realtors? How does it help Realtors if development just keeps happening and happening, right? Just because more houses are built, doesn't mean that I, as a Realtor, will get more clients. Now, there are a very, very small portion of Realtors who represent builders and developers, and obviously they would benefit. I'm not one of them. The vast majority of us, including myself, aren't going to see any meaningful increase in our business with more development in Greenville County. It just doesn't work that way. Hey, they're building, you know, I've got developments being built all around where I live. You know how much that's helped my business? None! I don't get business from, from those developments. So Realtors who push for more development, like myself, are not concerned about getting more business. That, that's the silliest thing. We're concerned about housing affordability. That is, and you guys know this, if you've been listening for a while, I've been on this train for a long time. I'm the conductor of the housing affordability train. We cannot have housing affordability if we don't build more units. And I'm going to have another podcast about this probably in a few weeks, showing just how far behind Greenville is in development right now in terms of trying to keep up with the population. That is what I'm concerned about. If we don't build, then prices skyrocket. It's really that simple. But Realtors don't automatically get more business with more development, okay? Let's just clear the air on that. All right, I digress. Let's get back to the riparian buffers and their impact. And here's what I want to say, that regardless of the end game for the environmentalists and other special interest groups that are behind this, I'm not against riparian buffers. I just want to clear the air. But I am against the green movement lobbying for things that are against housing affordability, which is something that they're known for doing. It's one of the classic things that environmentalists do. They will do just about everything that environmentalists stand for are against housing affordability. And that's fine. We can find ways to incorporate elements of the green movement into real estate and into housing and into development without seeing the, the cost of housing skyrocket. But left to their own devices, if they just did everything that they wanted, it would destroy housing affordability just about anywhere that, that, that they are. And I'm against that. I'm against that part of the green movement, because I believe we do need to find the balance necessary to address environmental concerns and create sustainable plans that allow developers to develop without substantially raising the cost of development, which always gets passed along to the consumer at a time when the cost of housing has never been higher, right? People are way more concerned about the cost of housing than they are about, you know, whether every riparian buffer is exactly the way it should be. Yeah. Do we have water quality problems in Greenville County? Sure. Tell me, how many times do animals, how many times do they poop? All right, I'm just going to say it. I said, I said the word poop on my podcast. How many times do animals poop near a stream? That poop washes into the stream. Now we've got tons of E. coli, tons of other things. These, I'm sorry, but we can do 1,000-foot riparian buffers. It's not going to fix the issues that we have. But those things are good. I'm not saying that they're bad. I'm not saying that we should just develop right up against streams. That's not at all what I'm saying. But there needs to be some common sense in this. And I mentioned before that they also included a 100-foot buffer from areas, okay, here's the proper terminology, with high volume of drainage. Now, I suspect this will be used to block a lot of development in the future. I mean, you get into some of these unzoned areas and it's very easy to claim that there is a high volume of drainage in that area. Very concerned about that language, very concerned about a lot of language right now as, as it's being utilized in Greenville County Council. And let's, let's be honest, there is, there are no two ways about it. This is 100% designed to restrict development and will be used however possible to do so. This is a NIMBY, not in my backyard, ordinance. It's that simple. But it's a NIMBY ordinance under the guise of environmental, trying to protect the environment. That being said, again, I've already said, I'm not against inherently riparian buffers. I'm not even inherently against the idea behind this ordinance. But there are some concerns that I have with how we're going about this. But that's only one part of the ordinance. There's a whole nother part of the ordinance that I'm much more concerned about and that I have much bigger issues with, and that's that the county included a requirement that any development of 10 or more homes in unzoned areas of Greenville County that are on septic systems must be on at least 1.5 acre, acre lots. Excuse me. Again, bear with me, I'm sick. I might be coughing at some point, I don't know. We'll see. I'm going to read that one more time. "Any development of 10 or more homes in unzoned areas of Greenville County that are on septic systems must be on at least 1.5 acre lots." Now, let's think, let's think for a moment about just how ridiculous this is. First, these are unzoned areas. I have had a lot of clients over the years targeting unzoned areas in Greenville County to purchase property. Why? Because they are unzoned and they want the freedom to be able to do whatever they want to do with their property. Now, imagine if Greenville County went to all the homeowners in unzoned areas and told them that they were going to be zoned. That would be the proper way to go about what they did. And I would be fully on board with if Greenville County wanted to propose new zoning for the unzoned areas, have at it. Let the people have a voice. Put up those proposed zoning signs all over the place and let people know what's happening, rather than just slide this through the back door. Guess what? People would be angry. They don't like to be zoned when they're in unzoned areas. So instead, because the county knew that people would be angry about this, even though they, they sat up there and lectured us about how, oh yeah, people are definitely in favor of this. I've talked to three people who are in unzoned areas that like this. Yeah, you're talking to people that, that you want to talk to is, is what's happening there. And the vast majority of Greenville County in unzoned area, I would put my money behind it. They do not want to have more regulations on their land because they know it devalues their land. So instead of going about it the proper way, the county snuck de facto zoning in through the back door with what is, in my opinion, a cowardly ordinance that they knew people in rural areas wouldn't be driving all the way down to downtown Greenville to protest. That's what this is. This is a cowardly ordinance. They knew that people would, would look at it and be like, oh, okay, that's, that's not a big deal. Or, or that it just wouldn't get newsworthy attention or that the media would cover in a way that is very positive towards the ordinance, which is exactly what happened. And so people wouldn't, wouldn't show up to support their unzoned areas, not, not realizing that they're getting their rights stripped away from their land. Now, I'll also mention that most people who live in Greenville in South Carolina, for that matter, live here at least in part because of a desire for limited government, okay? Maybe, maybe not everyone thinks that they live here in part because of a desire for limited government. But if you like what's happening in Greenville, guess what? Everything that's happened in Greenville has, has happened under limited government. And so if you like what's happening in Greenville, then you like limited government. That is the reality of the situation. And many of our counselors or, or councilmen and women in Greenville County have run on small government conservative platforms. Well, guess what? Nine out of 12 of them have shown their true colors, because this is the type of backdoor limiting of rights that you hear about in areas like San Francisco and Chicago. This is what you hear county council, city council people doing in major metro areas is with a stroke of a pen, getting rid of people's rights and, and doing it in such a way that supports these special interest groups that are not impacted at all by just legislation. I would have liked all the people in blue at Greenville County Council to state whether they lived in unzoned areas. How many of them are going to be impacted by this type of legislation? I, I bet that not a single one of them would have stood up had we done something like that. Secondly, I want to mention that everyone's concerned about infrastructure, right? Everyone. You talk to people all the time, very concerned about, about the roads, about water, sewer, all these different things, stormwater. And many people in county council, again, ran on platforms that were improving our infrastructure platforms. One of the major concerns with infrastructure is sewer and its capacity. And guess what? When people are on septic, they aren't impacting sewer capacity. It helps our infrastructure to have more people on septic. So what are we doing here? We're now, we're penalizing people. Remember, the, the one and a half acre minimum lot size for new developments are, for new developments on septic. Literally a penalty against going on septic that county council is basically just going back on everything they said about being concerned about infrastructure. They don't care about infrastructure. You know what they care about? They care about stopping development. When you hear county council say, we're concerned about infrastructure, hey, how many county council people have actually gone out there and positively impacted infrastructure? Name me one county council person that has done that in recent years that has, has really pushed that ball forward. You know what their only solution is for improving infrastructure? It's stopping development. That's been their only solution. They've been out of solutions now for years upon years. And it's not because there aren't solutions out there. It's because they don't want to listen to those solutions. They don't want to, to do the studies. They don't want to think creatively. They simply want to stop development because they've been bought by the NIMBYs. That is the reality of the situation. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just speaking truth here. If you're a county council member and you're listening to this and you're one of the nine out of 12, sorry, I, I said what I said. You can reach out to me and let me know if you disagree. I'll let my podcast know, my listeners know what you said if you do. And so you're, that invitation is out there for any county council people that want to make a statement. If you send me an email, my contact information in the show notes, I will read word for word. I will not redact it. I will read word for word what you say, but I may very well give my thoughts on it. And, and if it's too long, you know, if, if it's going to take me more than two minutes to read, I, I'm not going to read that, all right? So it needs to be a less than a two-minute read. We'll, we'll put that out there as well. Little caveat. All right. Here's another thing, all right? While I'm on this rant, many of those on Greenville County Council have run on platforms for affordable housing. It's pretty clear now that they either don't know what constitutes affordable housing, or they just don't care about it. The average home on a one and a half acre lot in Greenville County costs in excess of $668,000. Is that affordable? Is that what affordable housing looks like? Because guess what? Developers, here, here's the way development works, right? We oversaturate an area, you know, a rural area becomes a suburban area. A suburban area becomes an urban area and development has to push out. We have what, 22 people per day moving to Greenville County? Development has to keep pushing out in order to support that. We either grow or we stagnate, either forward or backwards. There's no, you can't just go on cruise control. That's what Greenville County Council seems to think, is that we can just go on cruise control and just kind of keep the county the way, the same, the way it is right now. No, we either are going to continue to grow or we're going to go backwards. We've seen this over and over again in so many different cities. You want to hear, listen, listen to the news about all these cities that, that they like to talk about, like the San Franciscos and the Chickagos and all of these cities that are going backwards. You know what? They stopped growing in the right way. And, and they tried to, you know, let all these other special interest groups decide what happened in their counties and cities. And guess what? Now crime rates are way up, housing prices are out of control, all of these different things. This is exactly what's going to happen to Greenville County. I hate to say it. This is exactly what's going to happen to Greenville County if we keep going down the road that county council is sending us. The average home on a one and a half acre lot, which is what they are requiring now for unzoned areas, what they're trying to require, it hasn't passed third reading yet. And, and once it does, then it will essentially go into law. Over $668,000 if you want a one and a half acre lot, a house on a one and a half acre lot. That is not affordable. And, and where I was going with my point before is that developers are going to have to go into these unzoned areas. They have no choice, right? As, as the rural areas become suburban and suburban areas become more urban, you have to push out into some of these unzoned areas for the upstate of South Carolina to grow. And so these tracts of land that are unzoned are going to become more and more important. And guess what? You cannot use a one and a half acre lot to build affordable housing. I mean, even a $250,000 house is not going to make money on a one and a half acre lot. A lot of people would say that a $250,000 house isn't even affordable by present day standards. But you, you can't even make money. Listen, I know, I, I have built and flipped houses on the side of my Realtor business for years now. You cannot make money, I'm going to say it again, building cheap houses on one and a half acre lots. The cost of land is too high for the numbers to work. So guess what? Property owners with developable land in unzoned areas, if this ordinance passes third reading, they will see their property values plummet. Because if they ever want to sell to a developer, who are them, obviously the main purchasers of major tracts of land, they would have to sell to a developer that has a way to make money building houses on one and a half acre lots. And there are hardly any developers doing that in Greenville County. So guess what? Imagine you list your home for sale, knowing that there's only going to be two people in Greenville interested in buying your home. Two people. Guess what? You're not, the likelihood of you selling that is not very good. The likelihood of you getting into a bidding war is even less likely. You're not going to have a lot of competition and so you're not likely to get a whole lot for what you're selling for. It's the same thing with land. Land by itself, land with a home on it in these unzoned areas, the fewer the buyers there are, the less value that, that you have for that land. And with there not being very many developers in Greenville County building on one and a half acre lots, when you go to sell, you don't have a, a large pool of potential buyers to purchase that land. You're, you're really limited to just a handful of small developers. Or if you're lucky, maybe an owner that doesn't want, a potential owner that doesn't want to develop the land, that just wants to keep it for hunting or whatever the case may be. But again, those buyers out there are few and far in between. If you do find a developer willing to do a development with one and a half acre lots, after that developer beats you down on, on the, on the price that they're going to purchase your property for, or that they're going to purchase your property for, since they won't be competing against probably anyone else for the purchase, then after they beat you down and, and purchase it, they're undoubtedly going to develop an unaffordable home product, probably well north of the $668,000 average. There's really no other way to go, right? How, how else, you know, what, what I would see them doing is probably mini farm kind of communities, something like Bruce Farms is, is a possibility where you've got frequently one, one and a half, two million, two and a half million dollar homes. That's the kind of community that developers typically do when it comes to, at least presently, one and a half acre lots. Now, Chairman Dan Tripp on county council attempted token diplomacy by including an amendment that would sunset this ordinance in two years. But we know what that means, okay? Unless people come out in force in two years to oppose this ordinance, it will be passed once again. Because the county isn't going to listen to developers' concerns, they're not going to listen to Realtors' concerns. And most property owners won't be selling their property in the next two years. So they won't realize just how much it's, that this ordinance has devalued their property. So they won't realize just how much it's, that this ordinance has devalued their property until later down the road. Okay? So sunsetting this in two years, uh, to me, absolutely meaningless, did not change anything with regard to, uh, to this ordinance. It just means more of the same. It's also insane to me that multiple times it was mentioned by people on the council, especially Enos Fant, um, who I have supported on this show before. I want to be very clear. I have supported Enos on the show before. I do believe he's an asset to the council. But when it comes to this discussion, I have full disagreement with Enos. He said that this ordinance isn't meant to be permanent. Others on the council said this ordinance isn't meant to be permanent, or at least, uh, alluded to that. He implied that the ultimate goal is to zone the unzoned areas. Now we call, uh, that saying the quiet part out loud. Hey, we're going to strip away your rights right now through the back door. See how it works. And then assuming nobody makes a big deal, we'll try to go about it the, the proper way later on. That to me is insane, an insane thing for the county to do. And I'm not calling out Enos for that. Again, nine out of 12 county council members voted, uh, on the second reading for this. We have a problem, okay? That this is a county council problem with three quarters of the county council on board. Greenville County Council has been sued many times over the past few years. And you have to wonder if this is just another lawsuit in the making. And I would just say, it's a good thing that they make all that money off of property taxes that they keep raising, uh, to keep those attorneys on retainer, because I do think that they're going to need those attorneys. I, I have a sneaky suspicion that there will be lawsuits coming. Maybe not the next year, maybe not in the next two years. Probably once it'll, most of these county council members are gone, at that point, it'll be someone else's mess to clean up. Regardless, make no mistake about this, the county council is made up officially. They have outed themselves of anti-development NIMBYs. People that believe develop, just not in my backyard. And they've found a convenient partner to help them stop development without saying that that's what they're doing. That's the environmentalists. And the media appears to be on the environmentalist payrolls as well, with glowing articles coming out of, uh, the Greenville News, Post and Courier, several others, uh, in the aftermath of the second reading. So much of the rhetoric around this topic is that it hurts developers and boo hoo. You know, they already have screwed us over, right? But what about property owners who have historically sold to these developers? What about them? Who is standing up for them and their land values? Nobody in the media, only a handful of people on county council. We need more people to stand up for the people in these unzoned areas that are about to have a ton of property value and a ton of rights stripped away from them overnight. In the past, I've written to even GBL Today, uh, a newsletter that again, I have promoted on this show to portray the other side. I've asked them to portray the other side of the anti-development debate and show how it hurts housing affordability. Because I feel like they have, even though they're pretty neutral, they have, um, at, at different times, uh, basically just parroted the headlines from, uh, from the media and, and not actually really showing the other side. And despite me reaching out to them, they're also non-committal. So I'm gonna call GBL Today out as well, because I've been supportive of them, but I'm not happy with them when it comes to matters like this. We need these media, social media, people, everyone, to be aware of this issue and to actually support property owners, not these special interest groups. So here we are. There's only one thing that we can do, and that is that people need to come out in force for the third reading of this ordinance and oppose this massive overreach by county council. The third, the third reading, I don't believe has been announced yet. But, uh, Greenville News believes that it will be on December 7th. So that's what I'm assuming at this point. Make sure that you look that up, uh, probably early December to double check. But I will be there, okay? And I want as many of you to be there. I don't care where you're from. We need as many people to come out against the third reading of this ordinance, against these one and a half acre lot requirements. At the very least, listen, we can leave the riparian buffer part of it alone, okay? I understand, uh, that there are some legitimate environmental issues when it comes to that. But the current, what we have been doing for, for septic, uh, lots for years, one and a half acres is so far and above DHEX requirements. And it's so far and above standard development requirements that it's just, it's an insane type of provision. I, I hope we need to get as many people out of there. We, uh, as many people out to the meeting as possible. We had almost no developers. We had almost no realtors, almost no property owners show up for the second reading. That has to change. I hope you guys will turn out and I hope you guys will show Greenville County Council that we won't stand up for them trampling on the rights of property owners and, and zoning unzoned areas through the back door. If they want to zone unzoned areas, they have a legal way to do that and they should go about it through the proper legal channels. I don't care if they've been working on this ordinance for nine months, 10 months, two years, 20 years, a millennia. I don't care. It's not right. It is not going to help the county. It's against what so many of the people in county council have put in their campaigns in the past, what, what they've been campaigning for. And we need to hold them accountable. So I hope you guys turn out December 7th or whenever it ends up being. Feel free to reach out to me early December. I'll have more information by that point for when that third reading is going to be. Reach out to me if you're confused, if you're not sure. I will, I will let you guys know. How do you reach out? Well, nice segue. My contact information is in the show notes. So please reach out to me in that way. If you email me, I prefer that you follow that up with a text to let me know in case the email goes into my junk. But I appreciate all you guys listening. Like, rate, review, subscribe, all of those things with the show. I love you guys. Thank you for listening. We will talk again next time.